Okay, everybody at this time will call the main order. Today is Monday day, the 13th day of the month of May. And we're so glad to see everybody here. We've got a lot of, of, uh, five young men and women in the room tonight who have done great, uh, things within the last 30 to 60 days. And we're looking forward to recognizing y'all tonight. But as we begin every meeting, we would like to ask everyone to please stand. And we'll begin our meeting with a prayer. Uh, by Mr. Brown, then we'll do the pledge led by our students here tonight, okay?
Father, we thank you for this day, dear Lord, for all your many blessings. We thank you for allowing us to serve this community in this county. And be afraid, Father, that you've guided us in everything that was there to lessen this meeting and every way in our lives, which is me.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may I just say. Okay, uh, Messrs, we have minutes presented to us from April the 15th, April the 29th. Uh, what's the pleasure of what concerning the approval of the minutes?
Most appropriate minutes.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, left side. Okay, let's move to the next item. We have tonight's agenda before us that we need to approve. Are there any additions or deletions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, at some point, I'd like to call up for a conversation to discuss the important matter.
Okay, alright. Motion to have a second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, left side. We'll add that under new business item G. Okay? Now, let's move to our first appointment item. We have the Skills USA students here today, uh, with us. If y'all don't mind, stand up if you don't mind. Let's give them a hand for being here tonight, y'all. Okay, uh, we're here to recognize y'all. Y'all can sit down now. Y'all, y'all have really done great. McDowell County school system, we think, is one of the best in the state. Uh, the CTE program is, is outstanding. Uh, we've got great people in place, uh, the school system does, to administer and oversee this program. And, uh, they, y'all have won a state awards consistently, uh, for the last four or five years. And so, we've got Mary Finley, where's she at? She is, there's Mary, okay, there you are. Mary, if you don't mind, come on up here. She is our CTE director. So, Mary, uh, the floor is yours, and we're so glad you're here tonight.
Alright, well, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for letting me showcase our wonderful group of students tonight. I'm going to give you a little information about Skills USA, so you'll, uh, really recognize what these students have done. Uh, the Skills USA North Carolina Championship took place April the 9th through the 11th in Greensboro. And this was the largest showcase of career in technical education in North Carolina with more than 2,500 students competing in over 120 contests. And so, these contests span more than 95 trade areas, anywhere from construction, masonry, automotive, advanced manufacturing, public safety, and many more. And so, during the competition, these students had to prepare a resume, take a test, interview, and complete a project or scenario based on their event. And so, top winners received a medallion along with prizes such as tools of their trade and/or scholarships to further their careers and education. And our first place winners will go on to compete at the national level, which will be in Louisville, Kentucky, June the 24th through the 29th.
And you're actually making sponsors for that.
We are making sponsors for that. And, uh, there will be over 7,000 students competing at that event. And so, we're very proud of our students. So, to recognize our winners, our first winner, um, in advanced manufacturing, first place is Mikel McKinney, and his teacher is Mr. Keith Scholes. And in our criminal justice, we took first, second, and third place in the state. So, our first place winner is Andrew Randolph. Second place is Ross Allison. And third place is Emma Sutton, and their teacher is Mr. Chris Marsh. And for EMT, our first place winner is Harley Laws. And her teacher is Mr. Barry McPeters. And we also had a fourth place winner in the state for the Community Emergency Response Team, and that student is Jerry Thompson. And his teacher is Mr. McPeters as well. So, thank you. These are a great group of students, and we know they're going to do a great job when they go to nationals and compete as well.
Mary, can we get a picture made with Messrs and all the students?
Yes, that'd be great.
Yep. Okay, y'all, give them a big hand right here. Y'all, I would say this, the future is bright. McDowell County, uh, with, with, uh, young men and women like these, this group here coming on, and we are so proud of y'all. Uh, when you have the first place, second place, third place, criminal justice, fourth place, uh, in the cert, I mean, just advanced manufacturing, first place, uh, EMT, great job, I mean, wonderful. This, this makes commissioners, uh, so proud when we can have y'all come in and, and we get to recognize your achievement. Because y'all are the ones who've done the work, uh, you've got the desire and the drive, and, uh, anything that this board can ever do to help any of you, uh, men and women out, we're here for y'all, okay? And, uh, congratulations, hats off to you. Outstanding, just what y'all have done and what you've accomplished. And just keep on doing it. Keep on doing it. The sky's the limit for y'all. And, uh, y'all, y'all one day will be the future leaders, uh, here in this county. And so, we, it's, it's so refreshing to know that we can go home tonight and sleep easy knowing y'all are coming in behind us. So, way to go, y'all. One more hand for them, okay? Yeah, let's move to our, uh, next item, uh, which is, uh, the recognition of our emergency services interns. Mr. Offord, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm Charles Autry. I'm the firefighter instructor at McDowell High School. Uh, we're here tonight to recognize, uh, three of our students who've completed internships this year with county agencies. We were at the city hall meeting a few nights ago, uh, recognizing the ones that had, uh, completed internships with the Marion Fire Department. But I've got three students tonight, uh, some of them you've already met, who, uh, I want to recognize. First is Blaine Williams, serves as a captain in the academy. Uh, Blank, Blank, would stand up. Blank completed an inter- internship with, uh, McDowell County EMS and also in the Emergency Communications Center. Harley Laws, also serves as a captain in our academy. Uh, Holly, uh, excuse me, Harley, completed an internship with the McDowell County Rescue Squad. And Joseph Davidson, who serves as lieutenant in the academy. Joseph also completed an internship with the McDowell County Rescue Squad. I, I would like to say that we have a lot of kids in, in the Public Safety Academy, uh, in both firefighting and EMS, and also in the, uh, Law and Justice Program. And we have a whole new crop of emergency responders, and these are the cream of that crop, so, very proud of them.
Ms. Kelly, you're here, and they're interns. Anything you want to add, uh, to what Charles has said? Go ahead.
I, I think, uh, you hit the nail on the head just a few minutes ago. They are the future of, of our agency and a number of agencies in this county. I was sitting here thinking, 22 years ago, I was an intern at McDowell EMS, and, uh, came up through the ranks, and our main focus is ensuring that the pipeline, the workforce pipeline for emergency services remains strong. And as Mr. Garrett, uh, consistently says, partnerships matter. And the partnerships of everyone in this room, uh, is, is strong in this county. And I think it's unique and something we've got to keep going. So, congratulations to each one of you.
Just like to, like to reinforce what, uh, these two previous gentlemen have said, how proud we are of these young men and women. I've had the pleasure to work with all three of these, uh, young interns, and, and the future is most definitely bright. Uh, they just amaze me at the retention of stuff that they, they retain, and their, their work ethic, their study ethic is, is superb. I'm, I'm very proud of them, very, very proud to, uh, have assisted them in any way that I could. And as far as the rescue squad, we are very proud to have them, and, uh, look forward to the future and what the future holds for them.
Thank you, Ray. Uh, for those who don't know, Ray is the chief of the McDowell Rescue. Captain? Captain. Chief. Mr. Jeffries is the chief, okay, uh, of the Rescue Squad here in McDowell County. And I'll say this while they're present, too. The board believes that we've got the best EMS, uh, crew leadership in the state of North Carolina. And I'll say the same thing about our firemen and our Rescue Squad, the best in the state. And looks like we've got the best in the state coming on behind to take y'all's spots when y'all retire. So, uh, that'll make everybody who's watching this, uh, this meeting tonight in McDowell County feel very, very good, uh, that it's all in capable hands, current and future. There you go. What more do you want? So, uh, with that being said, thank you so much for being here. Now, we know you, you can hang around and stay with us if you want to. Uh, it's awful boring what we do in here, but you're more than welcome to stay. Uh, if not, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda. We, we're here a couple hours tonight, so, uh, thanks for coming out tonight, y'all. And parents, thank you for supporting the children, uh, young and grown adults. Okay, at this time, move to item A, new business. Uh, this is a, uh, topic of the shooting range update, which, we'll, we'll hear, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, this is a topic we've not heard a lot about a couple of months. It's one of those projects that there's a lot of behind-the-scenes movement, uh, in this case, more so in Raleigh than it is in McDowell County. Uh, again, this is a cooperative project with the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, as well as the, uh, United States Fish and Wildlife Service. The funding for a public range has been proposed would come from, uh, federal government, and so, it is important to have, uh, matching funds for that project. As indicated in prior meetings, the state of North Carolina would greatly prefer to have a property donation count towards their match to the federal funds. Uh, and so, that has been the desire in this project here. You'll also recall, a couple of months ago, I presented an appraisal of the, uh, property there on Ashworth Road. The board asked that the property, uh, second opinion on that appraisal be done. Uh, Frank Dean, the local appraiser, did that appraisal, and you have that in your packet, and that has been submitted to NC Wildlife. I've been told that they will average the two appraisals, um, and then the average of that value will be what is used as the, the match for federal funds. So, uh, Mr. Gardner, who works for NC Wildlife, had indicated he had communicated with, uh, his federal counterpart to try to get that moving as soon as possible. I'd also spoke with, uh, NC DOT, the district engineer, about, uh, five or six days ago. Uh, DOT has been involved with NC Wildlife on the access road and bridge, and so, that is, again, in process and design. So, again, things are moving, but not so much where we can see them, but hopefully, uh, with this appraisal, uh, with the other information we've received, we'll see, uh, tangible evidence soon here locally.
What was the first appraisal value again, remind me?
It was around $500,000.
Who did that appraisal?
That was an appraisal firm out of, uh, Burke County that the North Carolina State Property Office hired. Um, they, if you look at the two appraisals, they use some of the same properties, um, but maybe from a different, different perspective. The, uh, the Burke County Appraiser seemed to go from the approach of, uh, more so similar instances, maybe, of the state purchasing property for conservation and that sort of use. Mr. Dean, his appraisal was more so from the perspective of, uh, the proximity of the property to the interstate and potential commercial, uh, use. So, really, just different philosophies on how the appraisal was put together, appraisal.
Well, we all think we got a low-ball first appraisal.
It seemed that way.
Order record, but anyway. Alright, let's move on then. Any other comments, questions?
Did they, have they given any kind of timeframe? They, you know, they have, uh, drove around, drove around, and, you know, people keep asking, and, you know, I keep saying, well, you know, it's, they waiting on DOT. But have they given us any kind of timeframe?
Not so much, um...
I know originally, the wildlife told us that, uh, two years ago. But, uh...
It, it is a slow process, and...
I understand.
Unfortunately so, and especially when you involve federal funding, uh, and, as is the case here, environmental studies and, which some of that has been happening over the last couple of months. It's not like they're waiting to start that, thankfully, but, um, uh, it's slow, unfortunately.
Other comments, questions? There being that, it's be, their next item under old business, this will be the Greenway Project Update. Mr. Wood.
Uh, this is a project that, uh, is located on a road where there's not a lot of traffic, so otherwise, I might say, maybe like the Ingalls Project, you know, that's hard to miss for most people, but, uh, Old Greenlee Road is not a heavily traveled road. So, unless you just happen to be on that road, you might not see the activity, but, uh, the, the county's contractor has been working for, uh, about a month or so on, uh, the Greenway there. And we're, and so, we've scheduled a groundbreaking for tomorrow at 2:30, which is a little bit later than we would have liked, but we wanted to, uh, allow, uh, Mr. Baker, the contractor, some time to get in and, uh, do some of the clearing, uh, to be able to get folks actually in for the groundbreaking. It sounds a little backwards, but, uh, in its prior state, it would have been hard to get more than two or three folks in at a time. So, this way, we have a little more breathing room and space. We've processed one pay request on the project. Uh, Mr. Baker, we've met on site with him a couple of times. Had a few weather delays, but, uh, they're proceeding, uh, pretty much on pace. The contract has an expiration date of around June 30th, and it, my guess is it'll slip a little bit later than that, uh, just with weather we've had this spring. But it's still, uh, proceeding fairly well. And we hope to have, um, a good groundbreaking tomorrow. I think the weather's supposed to cooperate. The city and the Trails Association are invited to participate, and we'll have plenty of gold shovels to go around. Good project, and I look forward to its completion.
Okay, comments, questions? There being that, let's move to the next item under old business. This will be the sales tax agreement.
Yes, sir. Uh, so, brief history for, uh, the public and, uh, recap for the board. Uh, in 2008, the county changed the distribution of sales tax, uh, monies and how that formula is set out. Counties controlled that, uh, that function, uh, and at the time, it was determined that it was in the, honestly, the best interest of the county for that, uh, change to be made. Unfortunately for the city at that time, when the distribution model was changed, there was a, uh, detrimental impact to their budget, uh, would have been, so the, that board implemented an agreement, inter-local agreement, uh, to lessen the impact to the city's budget over a number of years. Uh, I believe it started off around $450,000, and it worked out over time where it's leveled off around $100,000 now. And that's been in place for about three to five years. So, there was, uh, a desire from the commissioners to end that agreement, and so, the staff proposed an agreement to where, this year, we had budgeted 140 to be sent to the city, uh, again, roughly. And then next year, it would be 100,000, and then 67,000, and then 33,000. Then in year four, it would be zeroed out. You've actually have voted to proceed along that, uh, that path a couple of weeks ago at a workshop. I know the chairman has heard from, uh, the mayor.
It's mayor now. Just kidding.
Okay. A little early. Um, the chairman had heard from the mayor, um...
I'll pick it up for you now, Ashley.
Yeah.
Alright, so, uh, boards already voted, uh, for the three-year deal, uh, as, as a, another means of our board trying to work with their board to try to soften the impact. Two options were floated over, uh, that they, uh, in turn, are asking our board to look at, which was, uh, to go ahead and delay it, and then also to, uh, well, I've talked about this 100 times.
On the non-11 funds.
Instead of doing two positions, they pay us, uh, for one year, just do one position, that would equal $50,000. Uh, but, uh, Ashley and, uh, Allison had, uh, had a new discovery Friday afternoon late, which, uh, Ashley called me, I was in the meeting, uh, class, and he called and told that what had occurred, which was, uh, it was based upon the population, which he said their population increased by 500 people somewhere, somehow. Uh, so that means the agreement's capped at 445,000, anything above that, they get, right?
That's right.
For that agreement, which now has been, uh, our board has voted to do in a three-year deal. So, uh, the mayor was excited. I said, "Mr. Mayor, uh, our board, uh, just found this out. Our board's meeting Monday. Our board's going to, uh, discuss it, and, uh, what's your thoughts on, uh, the new money of 125 or 30,000 that you're going to get now that nobody knew about as of, you know, the discovery Friday afternoon? And forget, uh, the $50,000. Uh, you just send your money over for those two positions like normal, so you'll get 100,000 plus another 130,000, so you're ahead of the game?" He said, "Good with him." So, he, he, their board, uh, would, uh, like our board to go ahead and just, naturally, they would like the agreement changed that we voted on the other day, but that's, our, they want us to talk about that, but our board's already weighed in on that matter. But the, the big thing is this, for them, uh, for this year, they'll get $125,000 in new money plus the $100,000. So, they're going to come out 225, when they were looking at, what, uh, 100 plus another 50,000, 150. So, really, there's no, there's no action needed, then, is there? Because...
It's almost a wash, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
They're gaining...
Yeah.
Quite a bit this year, uh, honestly, to our detriment, but that's not their fault or ours, uh, the state population number.
Still costs does, but, uh...
Right, this year.
It's, it's basically about, it's close to a wash. Well, they're doing a little better with this plan.
That's right.
So, there's no action needed, because that's already per the old agreement.
You've already voted to do what, uh, you'd like to do.
Okay. So, no action needed. There's, just, uh, tell them, uh, there you go, new money for a year. Is that all we need, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir.
On that one, okay. Alright, let's move to, uh, item A, Health Department Resolution. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir. And we have our Health Department Director with us, too. Karen, good to see you.
It's hard to see earlier with the, the young people and the other folks, but, uh, again, Ms. Powell was here. If you have, uh, questions about this, but I'll try to do my best. But just to recap, it's been mentioned numerous times, but Polk County has, uh, has voted and is leaving, uh, the Health District effective July 1st, uh, which means there has to be, from the other two counties, Rutherford and McDowell, uh, decisions to be made, uh, whether or not to continue, honestly, in the district, but also, if that assumption is made, uh, what that board, governing board would look like, uh, the name of the district, et cetera. So, Ms. Powell has sent, uh, the attached resolution, uh, that governs the, uh, the size of the board, uh, which, is it 18 now? So, it's 18 members now. The recommendation is to go to 15, which is, uh, I believe, the minimum that a district board can have. Uh, and the setup is nine and six members, uh, nine being Rutherford, uh, it was a proportional number, uh, since they are larger. There is a health, uh, district change, uh, so it would be the Foothills Health District. And there's some other information about, uh, the governing board that is created, will assume the authority, uh, that the prior board had, and these, uh, this resolution will go into effect at midnight on June 30th. And so, on July 1st, uh, the Foothills Health District, uh, would implement the rules, uh, that would apply to the two counties, and we would just keep rolling.
Okay, comments, questions?
I'd move that we adopt resolution.
Thank you, motion to have second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, and opposed, left side. Karen's here. Anything you want to add, Karen, to that?
Um, no.
As our director.
I'd just like to say thank you for doing that respectfully. I bring that resolution to you, um, tonight, and appreciate you passing it. Um, again, it's kind of like what Ashley just said, we'll just keep on, and really, and be down, but for nothing changes, except the name and then our board setup. So, um, so I appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, let's move to our next item. Um, let's go to item B, our new business. We'll take care of that real quick. Uh, the 5K road closure, uh, Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, uh, Mr. Gene Morgan, uh, Glenwood Ruertan, had sent the, uh, request that you have before you to close, uh, section of Polyspout Road on June 1st for a 5K race. You have the, the ability to do that, to close a state road. It's one of the few, uh, abilities you have over state, uh, state highway system, but you do have that ability, uh, to do it by ordinance. The city of Marion does it all the time for Main Street, and you've done it for Old Glenwood Road. There is a typo, uh, in the document you have in the, um, in the packet, but the paper copy's been corrected, where it says Vane Mountain Road. It's actually Polyspout. But the ordinance that's in your packet otherwise is correct, uh, the date and time that will be closed. DOT just will require as part of it, uh, traffic control, uh, which is being coordinated with the, uh, Sheriff's Office.
Okay, comments, questions?
Just what kind of burden does that put on the locals that are in that area?
Want to understand from Mr. Morgan, uh, it is intermittent closure for that hour and 15-minute, um, timeframe. There should be...
There should be, the way I understood it, it was from, on the north side of Polyspout down to Vane Mountain. I understood the southern side, which again is an inconvenience, would be open to Vane Mountain. But for times between 8:45 and 10 o'clock that morning, it potentially could be an impact for anyone in that area.
And is this an annual event?
This would be the first, uh, first Gold Rush run 5K that has been held there, as far as we understand.
So this would have to be voted on again next year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's the way I would want it.
Okay, other comments or questions? There being none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Most approved ordinance.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, and opposed light side. Okay, sounds good. Now, at this time, let's move to our appointment item, item C. And this is the property reevaluation update. We have Mr. Kane with us and our esteemed Tammy Wiley with us also, who is our director. So, Mr. Kane, looks like the floor is yours. You're at the podium, so let's go.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for having me. This is going to be quick. We're in the short rows. The informal appeals, which is what we talked about last time, are over at this point. As I indicated last time, we sent 3,599 new notifications out. Thus far, we've got less than 100 formal appeals. That's through today's mail. The formal appeals, we will continue hearings tomorrow with this board sitting as the Board of Legalization and Review starting at 5:00 PM. And let's see. We have got, I mean, I'm sorry, formal appeals. The deadline for filing a written appeal, and because it is a formal appeal at this point, the writing is required. That deadline is the 16th, which is this week. For those 3,599 that I previously mentioned that were sent notifications, they have 30 days from the date of their notification. So they actually have until the 25th. But for anyone in the 32,000-plus parcels in the county that did not receive a new notification, they have until the 16th. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. Comments, questions?
One comment, just make sure y'all got your emails and everything for that. So look over and come tomorrow.
One thing too, I mentioned actually about that, the email, previously, previously, we'd had them, just like if it's a house, it'd be interesting to know the actual square foot, maybe a tax card. Is it a tax card?
It's a tax card.
Yes, sir.
We've got tax cards.
And you've got an entire package that you'll get tomorrow.
Okay, so we got the hard copy.
Yes, sir.
Got you. Because I looked through all 35 of them and it just.
It's another email.
Another email. Got you. Okay. All right. No comments, questions? Okay. Thanks so much. Have a good evening, y'all. Now, let's move to item C, under new business. This is the independent auditor recommendation. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Couple of months ago, staff notified the board that the county's longtime independent auditor, Johnson, Price &amp; Sprinkle, had notified us that they would no longer be doing audits for counties. I think they are doing maybe a handful of small towns, but county audits are a lot more involved and complicated than small towns, and it's just more than they want to take on, honestly. And so the board authorized staff issuing an RFP for a new auditing firm, which has been done. Ms. Bell, our Finance Director, had taken the standard form from State Treasurer's site, and we posted online. We contacted other counties to see who they used and emailed them directly, et cetera. And so we had two firms come and do site visits and have conversations. And that was Louder Milk Church and Company. And the other, just for the record, was Dixon Hughes &amp; Goodman. They also did a site visit. We also received a proposal from Martin Storms. They did not come and visit, which was not required. And Maudlin &amp; Jenkins, out of Atlanta, Georgia, also submitted a proposal. After reviewing the proposals and checking the references, staff is recommending Louder Milk Church and Company for the next three-year audit. Starting with this coming fiscal year, the amount would be $38,600. And then you see the increases over the next couple.
Previously, we've been paying what per year?
It was about $90,000. So when we looked at, you know, why can Louder Milk charge so much less than Johnson, Price &amp; Sprinkle? Again, who is an excellent firm and did a wonderful job. JPS, from what we can tell, is, I won't say too thorough as it relates to an auditing firm, but they're more thorough than most companies. And so that, we talked to the preferred firm here about, like, the number of pulls they would do of transactions, where JPS might do 350 pulls, Louder Milk probably does 150. And their philosophy is if you've not seen issues with 150 pulls, you're probably not going to see them with 350. And so again, JPS spent a large amount of time with staff, and this firm would do more remotely. So obviously, come and evaluating our processes, but.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Louder Milk Church and Company.
Okay, have a second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed light side. Okay. Let's move to the solid waste, item D. Under new business, solid waste fees. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Mr. DePoyster, our Public Services Director, is here as well on this item. But as we have entered the budget preparation time, we have looked at our different operations and determined that several items of necessity as it relates to our solid waste function. One of those necessary items of focus would be in our funding. And we are the, one of the few counties that almost completely relies on tipping fees for our, our operations there. And so we've looked at neighboring counties, what they charge as it relates to tipping fees. And most counties that haul to the Caldwell County landfill are charging at least $60 now or close, somewhere around $58 a ton. But we, we.
You know what, do you know what Rutherford is charging, Burke? You said, you mentioned him, and Mitchell?
I don't have it on hand, but I can get that for you. At least wanted to introduce the conversation, and we can discuss at a latter time if you'd like. The issue we face is our costs are increasing year over year with Republic Services, which we knew would happen, obviously, when the contract was approved, that there would be CPI adjustments.
What was it we approved on that? Who did? We hauled ours to Cleveland?
It's Caldwell County. We have a long-term.
What was it we approved on that? It's been a couple of years ago.
You have a locked-in agreement.
We did a three-year deal with them, or five years.
It's at least 10 years. So it was a pretty long deal, which is good.
But the reason we've done that longevity was to get a better rate, wasn't it? Didn't we get really what we asked for?
Yeah. We, we have a preferable rate there as opposed to what could happen when you have shorter renewal rates, terms. You can have the risk of having, I wouldn't say out-of-control increases, but higher than.
But I think it would come out pretty good on that, didn't we?
We did, as opposed to what you could get otherwise. But we. Yeah, I think it was actually longer than the company was asking for, to be honest.
They had a problem with that, I believe, too, didn't they?
They probably, probably wanted a little bit shorter so they could go up on us. But the gist is, staff is recommending that we look at a $60 a ton fee there. But it can be had in a, in the sense of a bigger conversation as it relates to the, the funding of that department and the operations there. Terry is new as far as overseeing that department and has other thoughts and ideas than prior, prior staff on maybe how things can be operated there and improved. And one thing we've noticed by no fault of anyone, perhaps, but certain areas have been overlooked as far as long-term maintenance. And so we're having to catch up on some of those areas.
We need to go ahead and just have the workshop and talk about.
All right.
Can do that.
By consensus, board members want to just have a workshop on it? Okay. All right, Ashley, there's your direction. Okay. Let's move to item E. This is administrative items. Under new business, Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir, let us out.
As is typical, you, under the administrative items, you have water system waiver requests from the Randolph residents. You have a note there from residents and a receipt. It looks like a part for a toilet. So they're asking for a waiver of $58.91. And again, Mr. DePoyster is here if you have a question about it.
Okay, comments or questions? All right, what's the pleasure of the board concerning this one item here?
Most approved.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed light side.
The next item, each year, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council presents an annual plan for your approval. It relates to their budget and their board setup, et cetera. And so we received that, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, Cheryl, and it requires the board's approval, and staff recommends its approval.
And it's just money, federal, state money comes through that we have.
It's a pass-through.
Passed through us, okay. What's, comments, questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion approved.
Motion?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed light side? Okay?
Next, we're trying to keep our EMS accounts cleaned up. So you have several write-offs from that area. Most of them are over the 10-year period of collection, and we're not allowed to forcibly collect them after that point.
So by state law, it's beyond 10 years we can't collect, right?
Yes, sir.
Game, motion, second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed light side? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
And the last, there's a grouping of amendments from GF 55 through GF 66, and then three enterprise amendments for waste, water, and universal, and then a self-insurance amendment. I'd be glad to go over any of them if you'd like.
Motion approved, second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed light side? Okay?
That's all we had.
Okay. Now, let's move to item F, tax matters.
These should be routine. It's at the end of the year, so you're going to have less of these. And there are a few write-offs as well. Five.
Okay, are there comments or questions concerning any of the items that you've had, had to review for the last four or five days?
Hope that we approve.
Okay, motion of second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed light side? Okay? All right? Let's see. Let's go ahead and do, see if there's a comment. Let's, let's move that on up. What time we know we had it scheduled? I don't see a specific time. So since when are we getting to the end of the meeting? Yeah. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak tonight? See if there's a comment.
Terry DePoyster.
Terry, don't you do it.
No further comments.
Okay. All right, there being none. Let's see. Do we have any reports, communications?
Just a reminder, on the groundbreaking tomorrow at 2:30.
Okay.
The Old County River Park.
All right. And Madam Clerk does an excellent job keeping us informed. The, the day we have a meeting is, is the morning. Always another call or a text is very helpful. And we appreciate that. Excellent job. Okay, at this time, pursuant to North Carolina General, I need a motion pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11. Do we have a motion going to closed session for employee matter?
Motion going to closed session.
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed light side? Okay. All right, y'all, we got to go into closed session. Okay. After a closed session regarding personnel items, we're not, no actions going to occur. Down here, a motion?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed light side? Okay, made adjourned.